Susan Mary.
Oh, yeah.
I declare this meeting of the Monticello City Council to order. Please rise. I pledge allegiance and then Alderman Burris will lead us in prayer. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you so much for bringing us together again. We ask you to delete us and speak to us and help us make great decisions for a great city. We love you and thank you. In the name of Jesus. Amen?
Amen. Mayor Stoner is absent tonight. I was.
Oh, geez.
To for a mayor pro tem.
I'm Tom Reed.
Tom Reed, do I have a second?
Second.
And second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mayor Reed, it is for this evening. And I'll start with roll call when we're ready.
Jill, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Vogt, Ms. Lively, Mr. Denise.
Yeah.
Mr. Woodham.
Here.
Mr. Reed.
Yes, here.
Mr. Burris.
Here.
Mr. Kuhn.
Here.
Mr. Broderick.
Hi. I'll get here.
Mr. Brock and Mr. Piercy.
Here.
We have a quorum.
And the first thing, I guess, this evening is public participation. First thing is in-person participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. Those wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to commencement of the meeting and must address council from the seat and table provided. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and must be limited to five minutes or less. Chief, do you have anybody?
I'm on it.
Thank you. Remote participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. At this time, members of the public are able to, who are able to attend public meetings by web conference and to submit public comment by email, voicemail, or through web conference. Maura, do you have anybody?
Yes, Mr. Schreffler.
Mr. Schreffler, please go ahead. Steve, are you there? Are you having Maura?
He's not coming back. He's still on.
Guess we should probably move forward then. Okay, not hearing anything from Mr. Schreffler. Let's proceed with the consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items as listed. It's a claims report, claims dated June 13, 2023 through June 26, 23. Meeting minutes, city council meetings, excuse me, city council meeting minutes, June 12, 2023, city council closed session, meeting minutes, June 12, 2023, and the budget report, May 20, 23. Do I have a motion to approve these?
Summude.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
No.
Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Ms. Lively, Mr. Denise, Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Right.
Mr. Brock, Mr. Piercy.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is this what you want to proceed with next, the mayor's report, this, or to go to?
Okay, yeah, mayor's report.
Mayor's report. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure. Step to the bottom. Mayor's reports next, mayor's report, June 26, 2023. The Monticello Farmers Market is Thursdays, 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. on the east side of the square in downtown. The Monticello Freedom Fest will be Monday, July 3 at Lodge Park with vendors, music beginning at 4:00 p.m. and fireworks at dusk. You can also watch the fireworks from Eli Field, at the Eli Field and M3 Open House, or ride the train from Monticello Railway Museum. Swing by our neighbors to the south for July 4 celebration and be met with parade and fireworks. And then finally, Allerton Park is hosting the Reds, Whites, and Blues event the evening of Friday, July 7.
It says turn off computer audio. And not being able to see doesn't help either.
Bar, did you catch all that? I'm sorry.
I think he's talking to his wife.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. So you guys can hear me now. Sorry about that. I just wanted to see if I could get an update. I've had a lot of people asking me about the city of Monticello water quality, and I haven't heard you guys talk about that lately. So I was just curious as to if there's any updates. Thank you.
Terry, anything you would like to elaborate on briefly?
Our water treatment plant operator just returned to work, and we are still diligently working on the water clarity issue.
So to me, this is an ongoing process, right? So.
We will continue until it's, the water clarity is resolved.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Do we know what's causing the problems with the water clarity?
I think he's kind of out of work.
Since he couldn't be heard at first, but we don't have, you don't have to do this at this point.
No, I understand.
No, you don't have to, just in case you wanted the public to know.
I would hate to speak for Terry. I mean, probably when we have more information, we'll be sure to share that. But it's, again, it's an ongoing process right now, and there's still some things I know that to be investigated, we probably don't have the final answers on.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Welcome. Okay, old business, none, new business. Ordinance number 2023-32, granting a variance allowing an accessory structure in front yard setback at 2 East Gate Drive, City of Monticello, Piatt County, Illinois. Jim, is that you?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem Reed and council. Very official. Now, Ms. Lucille Trent, Lucy Trent is here requesting a variance to the front yard setback at her property at 2 East Gate Drive. In your packet, you saw where the location of this was. It's off of Bridge Street and East Gate. It's on a corner lot. She's one of those lots that has two front yard setbacks and two side yard setbacks because it's a corner lot. So in our zoning ordinance is it doesn't allow for an accessory structure in a front yard setback. However, on a case-by-case basis, what we do is we take a look at the surrounding area and what goes on there. And if you all are familiar with it, you've probably driven about 100 times, there's a shed there that she desires to replace. And so rather than just replace it, which she would be within right to do by leaving some of it there, she wants to make it a legal and conforming lot. So she submitted a request to get a variance to the front yard setback for that property for those purposes of replacing the shed. So now I'm going to read to you the blah, blah, blah part of my job. Advocate Ms. Lucille Trent has an existing storage shed on her property located within the front yard setback. It is a corner lot and by definition has two front yards and two side yard setbacks. She desires to make it a legal and conforming so she can replace it. Her property's zoned RD, Urban Residential, and this restriction can be found in section 153.02 subsection B, item one of the Monticello Municipal Code. Granted the variances and subsequently replacing the shed of the similar footprint will not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare, or the normal and orderly development improvement of the surrounding properties. Staff received no comments regarding this request. The PZB had a hearing on the 20th. No public comment was heard at that time. We did receive one email in support of the variance from one of her neighbors that were notified of the action, and the planning and zoning board unanimously voted to recommend the variance request. As I said, you had a copy of the pictures of the property, the PZB motion, and the attached ordinance 2023-32 were included in your packet. So according to the City of Monticello Municipal Code, section 153.077 subsection F, variances shall be granted by city council by way of ordinance. So it's recommended that city council discuss and approve the ordinance 2023-32, granting a variance allowing accessory structure in the front yard setback at 2 East Gate Drive, City of Monticello, as submitted.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this ordinance, please? Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Jill.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Piercy.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. It's 2023-33, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the redevelopment agreement between the City of Monticello and Monticello Community Building Board of Members concerning the property located 201 North State Street, Monticello, Illinois. Terry, is this you now? This one, please.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Reed. This and the following three ordinances deal with amending existing redevelopment agreements, and the amending is simply extending the time for these individuals to get the work accomplished. I think we're all aware of the issues with steel, with supply, with labor, with everything going on. All these projects have been, have started. Some are well on their way to be completed, but all four applicants are asking for an amendment to the timeframe. So real quick, some background information. In 2019, the city council adopted a business district plan and boundary that took effect in January 1 of 2020, and that was a one, it included a 1% sales tax, additional sales tax on eligible items only. And it was truly an effort from the council to engage in a public-private partnership. So that 1% sales tax can be used inside of the boundary on eligible projects. The first year in 2020, we budgeted $50,000, and subsequently in 2021, another $50,000. And then last year and this year, we've budgeted $100,000 for these. Earlier this year, we amended the business district boundaries. The original business district was from County Market to Center Street, from the Monticello Family Aquatic Center to Buchanan Street. The amendment that was approved by the council earlier this year extended that boundary out toward the Oberhain Park area, older out 47, north all the way to Kirby Hospital, Kirby Complex, Ford Riding, Riddings Ford, south all the way to and included Bear Park. I think that's the gist of the new boundary. So with all of that being said, I hope that's a sufficient update. The first one in front of you this evening, let me get it pulled up, is for, oops. Sorry about that. Is for the community building board of officers. On January, it says January 3, but I think it was January 9. The city council approved ordinance 2023-01 redevelopment agreement with that community building board. The business district as it's set up now, all of these go through a review committee. The review committee entails a member from the Historic Preservation Commission, a member from the Planning and Zoning Board, the Director of Main Street and Chamber of Commerce, and then Cali Joe McFarland, Jim Gabarzik, myself, and Clayton Dobson assist from City Hall. So these were all approved on that January 9, 2023 city council meeting. Usually is not to exceed $10,000, but it could go up to 50% of the cost estimate. Any increase over that $10,000 would be approved by the city council. So tonight, they are requesting to extend those improvements, which if you've been by there, they've done a lot of work to the gutter, downspouts around the building, tuck pointing, and so on and so forth. So they are requesting a new project completion date of September 30, 2023. So it is recommended city council approve ordinance 2023-33 as submitted.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 2023-33?
Summude.
Second, please. Roll call, excuse me.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
And Mr. Piercy.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2023-34, ordinance approving the First Amendment redevelopment agreement between the City of Monticello and Jackson Property LLC concerning the property located 200 West Washington Street, Monticello, Illinois. Terry, you've already kind of given us the rundown of everything, but could you specify a little bit more?
So the same deal with this property. The city council approved this redevelopment agreement earlier this year. It entails, oh, some window replacement, limestone replacement, steel signage remove and replace, some AC unit work. So a lot of these have, obviously, a lot of these have been started, that all of them are complete, just like the first ordinance. So they are requesting, again, completion date of September 30 of this year. Staff does recommend approval of ordinance 2023-34.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Pass a question real quick.
Sure. Go ahead, John.
How were the original completion dates come up with? Do you remember?
So there, good question. There are two grant submittal time periods, if you will. So next week, we're going to get what would be the fall requests. So with that, there's a window of time for to submit, and then there's a deadline established at that time across the board. So spring semittals are, what, that date?
Six months.
Yes.
All right.
Is there any thought along that, especially given the instruction, the state of that, extending that in the future, maybe for the time being to like nine months anyway, so we don't have to keep coming back? Or do you think six months typically is sufficient? And this is just because you have several of these, that's the reason I bring that up.
Yeah. If the council wants to do that, I don't know if I would, I don't know if that's necessary right now.
Okay.
You know, the purpose is to get the first spring semittel in, get that finished, move on to the second, the fall semittel.
This is fine. We just have to periodically then come through and extend the deadline.
And there could be circumstances that the council may not want to extend the deadline. You never know.
I don't know that we would do that forever, but given the current status, it's understandable why these projects are not moving along faster than they are. That's just the circumstances we're in.
Yeah, and some are more money than others and.
And it doesn't hurt to put an earlier deadline, and we can come back and do this. It just seems like we've got several of these here.
At least it's a fairly easy fix for the most part if we.
And for like building that we actually have downtown, we need to actually keep it together instead of not letting it go to waste. Right.
Yeah, just a question. Just saying.
Jill, can we roll call, please? Didn't we get a motion? A thought?
I don't think we have a motion. I think we, I think John started the question before.
Before he did, okay.
Because if not, I didn't write it down. So ask for a motion.
Ask for a motion, please. Thank you. I thought we did. I'm sorry. Maybe I missed it. Second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Piercy.
Okay, we're on 2023-35 now, right, Jill?
Yes. I just, I just did 34.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay, ordinance number 2023-35, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the redevelopment between the City of Monticello and TNR Ventures LLC concerning the property located at 315 West Washington Street, Monticello, Illinois. Terry?
Same deal. This project consists of construction, constructing a back porch and rear entrance, installing new windows, new HVAC system. And staff has reviewed this, and staff does recommend approving ordinance 2023-35.
Do you have a motion to accept this, please?
Summude.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Piercy.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2023-36, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the redevelopment agreement between the City of Monticello and Willow Tree Missions concerning the property located at 100 East Washington Street, Monticello. Terry, again.
This project consists of installing new signage for the building, replacing four egress windows on the second floor, where the organization will be offering transitional housing. This is the new location of the Willow Tree Missions. Staff has reviewed this, and staff does recommend approving ordinance 2023-36 as submitted.
Could I have a motion, please?
Summude.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Right.
And Mr. Piercy.
Yes.
Motion passes.
It's entertaining. Don't worry about it. All right.
It's just your answer. I've got it. Fact is, yes.
Sorry, Lucy.
Alderman's report. Mike, you want to go first, please?
Go ahead. I have a question for city administrator, and this, you may cover this later, so I apologize. If you could give us an update on the water tower project and on State Street. We are in those two.
I do not have an update on the water tower. State Street, we had the pre-construction, pre-construction meeting last week. The contractor, the concrete contractor sub is going to start, I believe, July 10. And he'll be, he'll be working ahead of the asphalt crew. So probably two to three weeks after that, you'll see the asphalt crew come in.
We're still anticipating completion at the end of August, or is that?
The completion date is, hopefully, will be mid-August.
And the water tower, that was originally a last year project, right? I can't remember why it happened, or?
I think they ran out of time last year. It's, those are using the ARPA funds. So we're spending.
Who's in the budget for this, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Those funds have to be spent either earmarked or spent by 2026. Hopefully, we'll have them all spent by 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike? Anything?
No.
No? Mr. Piercy?
No, thanks.
Rodney?
Oh, you're just going around the table.
I'm just going around the table. Yes. You.
I don't know why I asked this before. Is there a reason we don't do online payment for water garbage bills?
Oh. Um. You can pay your water. You can do it online.
Where the heck have I been?
However.
I will tell my wife, because that's what the rest of the story is.
Good talk.
I'll pass that along. Thank you. Anything else?
No, that's plenty for me.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Speaking of water bills, I have a question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
What is, every year I get confused, is it, so it's the, your summer bill, it's the average of the previous six months, right?
Eight months.
Eight months. And that starts?
So for 2023, we changed it. It used to be for maybe July, July, August, six inch, but we had very few people that will water in the morning and many more that will water in September, so we moved that back. So this calendar year, it's due July, August, September, actual usage. So it'll start on your next bill, July, August, September, October bills. If you happen to water this year, very many, Terry, because it was new, said that if you contacted the city, we would do your average for this one time because it was in, so you watered this call.
Like watering a swimming pool counts?
Yes. And filling a swimming pool always counts. Yeah, just call me tomorrow.
I will. Thanks. I opened the bill right before I came. I'm like, oh!
You're like, hello.
I'm like, drink in the pool!
Have to look into that, too.
Yeah. Yeah, you better go check your.
Yeah, check my bill. Yes. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Police chief's report. Chief, anything?
I don't know a whole heck lot. If anyone of your constituents reaches out to you complaining about solicitors, please send them to my office. Over the last two weeks, we've been inundated with solicitors that are ignoring the monocleist, ignoring getting a permit for just being outright rude. I revoked one solicitation permit that we are permitted to revoke and issued another citation. So we tried the nice way here about a month ago. Obviously, with some people, if you do not hit them in the pocketbook, they don't pay attention. Now they are paying attention. It seems to be one solar company and one window company. It kind of varies. But if anyone does get a complaint, someone reaches out to you, please tell them to call my office, and then we will get on it. The sooner we know about it, the better. Please don't wait until we can say, hey, they were at my house on Sunday afternoon. If we can get there within a few minutes, we can usually take care of it right then.
Thank you. That sounds like a show. City administrators report, Terry.
I just have one thing real quick. I'd like to commend and thank Chief Bros for patrolling State Street. At our last staff meeting, Public Works Director informed us that they've had a handful, several close calls with people driving down State Street, pulling off to the curb, trying to avoid cones, labor, barricades. I don't understand that at all. There's public works people in the road with high-vis equipment on, and people are swerving to miss them. So as soon as Chief Bros was made aware of that, he sat there a few days and has already had a couple of conversations with folks that just had no idea that something was going on. There's a large yellow truck. There's a backhoe. There's people in the road. So please, you know, it's a dangerous job the guys have, and. you know, it's, it's a dangerous job the guys have and I don't want to see anybody get hurt.
Thank you.
And I was going to say, I have, I have a trial turning sixteen in a few weeks. Who keeps, she, we're practicing our driving down State Street and it's been very interesting the last, last week.
Did it?
That's all I have.
Thank you. I believe we got everything wrapped up for this evening. A motion to adjourn then, please? Second?
Second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.